All right. Hello, everybody. Welcome to object study week 10 or something like that. Live from my basement. So I'm Garth Johnson, Eversyn's Paul Phillips and Sharon Sullivan, curator of ceramics. And we've been doing this for, I think, about 10 weeks now. All of this started as a Syracuse University object study class that I started teaching. And once we were forced to go online, then we started sharing this with everybody. This is our first experiment with doing this on Zoom. So I encourage you to use the chat feature. Say hi from wherever you are. Introduce yourself. And if you have any feedback about your experience on Zoom, please let us know. We are also trying a concurrent experiment and we are live streaming this on Facebook. So we'll see if we get too fancy for our own good. So welcome, everybody. It is my great delight this week to be hosting James Klein and David Reed. I'm terrified that I'm going to keep messing up and transposing those names, otherwise known as the design firm Klein Reed. We share some history, but I have actually never gotten to go to their studio and meet them in person. So it's my great pleasure to be able to welcome them virtually here today. And I'm really excited about cooking up some sort of collaboration with them in the future. A few housekeeping notes. Feel free to share your video. If you're not, we love to see your smiling face. But if you need to hide your video, that's fine, too. Also, make sure that you're on audio or your audio is on mute. I think that that is the default. Also, I encourage you to change to full screen. If you hadn't, we will be showing some slides and showing some images. And also switch to speaker view, particularly when we're showing some images and showing pieces. You're going to be able to see that a lot better. So I think up in your upper right hand corner, you should see the ability to do the speaker view. I see some really amazing guests here, people that I haven't seen in a long time. Welcome to those of you who are joining us for the first time. I'm pleased to say that next week we will be welcoming Syracuse resident Dr. Sharif Bay as our visitors. And we'll be talking about his work and doing a virtual studio visit with him. So we'll talk a little bit about the Eversyn's upcoming plans with Sharif as well. So today we're going to be talking about design and design is a little bit like the word craft in that I often describe it as the parable of the blind monks and the elephant, with each of the blind monks feeling a different part of it and no one sort of grasping the totality of it. So when I say the word design, it's going to mean something different to everyone who's watching here. But one of the things that I want to underscore is that design is at the very heart of the Eversyn's collection. So as I want to do, I'm going to talk for 10 minutes and show off some slides of pieces that are in the Eversyn's collection and talk about an exhibition that is up, but hidden to the public currently. So this is my mini curator's tour of the casual China exhibition that we have up right now. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen again. All right. So here we are. Again, a few housekeeping notes that I usually give. Go to the Eversyn's website, which is www.eversyn.org. And you can find more about the online activities that we're doing. We've made sure that the curators and the education department have been busy getting content to you, the people, to welcome you into the museum, even though you can't go there in the flesh. The other thing that I encourage you to do, if you haven't done so yet, is to go to eversyn.org and check out the database of the Eversyn's collection. We've gone to great pains to digitize and put things online. So if you go to eversyn.org and go to exhibitions, you'll find a line called ceramic database. And in the ceramic database, you'll be able to see all of the entries from the ceramic national exhibitions, which started in 1932, the pieces that came into the Eversyn's collection through the ceramic nationals. And the Eversyn's legacy of collaborations with design are right there for everyone to see. So if you want to do some research, please, by all means, avail yourself of the resources that we've put out there. All right. So to talk very briefly about design, I've brought up the figure of Adelaide Alsop Rabineau repeatedly during these seminars. And Adelaide Rabineau is the reason, along with Anna Olmstead, our director, why the Eversyn has an interest in ceramics. She lived in Syracuse, excuse me, and made her career from here in Syracuse. And it's interesting that she very doggedly pursued a studio ceramic path for hers. That's a lot like the way that artists currently operate their own studios. And I would argue not that dissimilar from the way that James and David operate Klein Reed. But Adelaide Rabineau wanted to have control over everything. And it's interesting, in my object study class this semester, we talked a lot about what the audience was for ceramics in the early part of the 20th century. And Adelaide Rabineau was certainly trying to create beautiful objects that would be at home in someone who was interested in the arts and crafts movements home. But she was very ambitious and she was trying to bring her audience along and teach them about design and teach them about what was going on in Europe. And it's interesting that the scarab base, which you see right here, and I can zoom in. For those of you who aren't familiar with the scarab base, it is the very centerpiece of the Eversyn's permanent collection. It took Adelaide Rabineau more than 1,000 hours to do the carving on the scarab base. She had to do all of that carving while the scarab base was bone dry, which is really impressive in itself. But the audience wasn't really a wealthy person that would keep this in their home. I think Adelaide Rabineau's audience for this piece was more her peers. So she created it during a sojourn in St. Louis. She was living and working in University City, St. Louis, at the People's University, which was a fairly short-lived educational experiment. And she was working alongside the designers Frederick Hertin Reed and the French ceramic artist Taxil Doatt. And she got fewer resources and was not treated as well as the men. So one of her responses was the scarab base. She created this piece while she was in University City. And the audience was the design world. She immediately sent this piece off and something like 30 other pieces to a design fair that was the creme de la creme of all design fairs during that era. It was in Turin in Italy. And she won a first place award at the Turin Design Fair, which was the first time that an American designer had taken those top honors. And she really showed Europe that Americans were working on a par and even surpassing Europeans in some cases. So it's incredibly fascinating. And Adelaide Rabineau kept her thumb in design, even though she never designed for the vast market. She did some little experiments with slip casting, but really loved to have the control of crafting all of pieces on her own. All right. So it's my flight, my pleasure to introduce you to the exhibition that you can't see in person right now. And that is casual China. And there's another exhibition not on view right now at the Eversyn that is an exhibition of the creme de la creme, our art pot. It's called Renegades and Reformers. And as I was putting that exhibition together, we were bringing, we literally brought more than 1,000 pieces out to look at them in person and think about a little bit of deaccessioning because the Eversyn's collection of art pottery is massive and runs into the thousands of pots. And as I was doing that, my eye was really caught by works from the 1930s and 1940s on up to the early 1950s that are objects of design that were created by design studios and well-known designers and came into the Eversyn, both through the ceramic nationals and because we had regional connections to a lot of them. I would say that the main firms, the main studios that we are focusing on in this exhibition, it kind of all starts with Steubenville and their pots, I think, from the 1930s that were designed by Russell Wright. And Russell Wright then began designing for the Iroquois Pottery Company, which is based in Syracuse. Incredible company. And Iroquois solved some technical challenges that Steubenville had not. And supposedly you could even take the flame ware, the porcelain flame ware from Iroquois pottery, and you could put it directly on a flame and fry things in the ceramics that they created from that era. To this day, Iroquois pottery is in great shape with generally very little crazing and very little effects of time. Another incredible designer who designed for Iroquois pottery was the designer Ben Seibel. And he had some Syracuse connections as well through Iroquois. And I'm happy to say that if anyone is interested in researching Ben Seibel or researching Russell Wright, both of their archives live at Syracuse University. So you can come and research. This is one of the greatest places to research both of them. And Ben Seibel's personal archive came to the Eversyn upon his death. And we have more than 100 pieces of Ben Seibel's work. There is also, it's in a different page, but we have an Eva Zysel piece from Hall China that's in this exhibition. And we're going to talk to James and David about their relationship with Eva Zysel over the years. Here's a close up so you can see a little bit more of the work that's in the exhibition. Here is that Eva Zysel classic fantasy Paul Kraft piece. You can't see it very well because of its color. These are design pieces from, that are Fiesta ware on the left. And the pieces, they're all on the right are from Hall China. And I have a great love for Hall China's refrigerator where the squared off, where that you would get, at the same time that you got your refrigerator that would fit well in it, particularly these incredible water pitchers. So we have a couple of water pitchers from our collection that were meant to go in your refrigerators. So incredible bits of modern design. Then the other thing that I was not super well versed in, but that now is very near and dear to my heart, is something that's connected to my alma mater, Alfred University. And this is Glidden pottery. And Glidden pottery employed some really talented designers over the years, particularly Fong Chow, who was an Alfred alum and very well-known. And here we have a range of pieces that were crafted for Glidden. And Glidden immediately garnered a cult because the pieces looked distinctive. They had their own aesthetic. These covered casseroles, which are incredible, actually came to the Eversyn through the ceramic national exhibitions. And the Eversyn was one of the first museums certainly to laud Glidden pottery. This particular piece is one of my favorite pieces in the museum's collection. If anyone wants to guess on via chat, I won't leave you hanging very long. But the function of this piece is that it was a spaghetti server. So you would put your big pile of spaghetti noodles in here. And then there's a covered warming tray in here for you to keep your spaghetti sauce in. And it's very rare to find these with their wooden handles intact. So the Eversyn is very happy to have them. And the last thing that'll show you is an image from the middle of the screen. And this is an incredible Glidden piece designed in Alfred. And very rarely, as curator, do I ever get envious of a piece because I have access to the pieces in the Eversyn's collection. But I dug out this snack revolving snack carousel Ferris wheel from Iroquois China. And you better believe I was on eBay right away trying to find one. And I'm happy to report that I did. And our Ferris wheel made its debut during the Super Bowl this last year. So if you ever come to a party at the Joyce Johnson household, we may serve something to you out of the Ferris wheel. All right. So I need to check. James and David, are you there? And can you unmute yourself?
Are we unmuted? I think we're unmuted.
See if we can get them up. Let's see.
I think you should be able to hear us.
Okay, so I think you are still on mute. Go ahead and unmute yourself at the bottom. Okay, so I think here they are. And I'm going to introduce them. James Klein and David Reed. They got their MFAs from Cranbrook Academy of Art and Alfred University. They founded Klein Reed as a design studio in 1993. And they've had incredible adventures in design and the market ever since. And that's what they're here to discuss today. So welcome, James and David.
Yay, great to be here. Thanks for having us.
Absolutely. So the first question that I'm going to ask you is very personal to me. I am an Alfred University alum. I went to Alfred in the late 1990s. And I will say that particularly among my graduate cohort, design was not really a discussion, although for Alfred University and Cranbrook, like the Eversyn, there is a long history of symbiotic relationship between the institution and the field of design. But I don't feel like the faculty and the resources, other than particularly the ceramic engineering department at Alfred, pushed people to explore design as a career. And I think those things are getting a little bit better now. And I'll say on the other side, schools in design like Parsons or Otis didn't necessarily give designers the tools to specialize in ceramics. So to kick things off, I'd love to have you talk about each of you deciding to attend your respective universities for graduate school and the path that led you there and to focus on design.
Well, so many thoughts just in my head. I don't, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to know where to start. But I think, you know, the idea of Klein Reed from the beginning was that we would try to occupy the space that was between all of those things because we feel like we craft art and design. We feel like we're all of those things. So we're craftspeople, we're designers, and we're artists. And we don't want to really surrender any of that or compromise any of that. So we, so you know, to that, to try and accomplish that, we try not to label it too much. And I'm always curious about what people think we are. I don't know. You know, I have no idea what. It probably depends on who you are, but you know, what you think we are.
It makes it very hard to market what we do because, yeah, people don't know if we're like a big, huge company or artist.
But I mean, I don't want to sidetrack things at all, but I'm very interested in fact that when you started in 1993, I would say that the market had sort of a cleaner-than-thou minimal aesthetic. And we're living in an era right now where Jeeps are marketing themselves via touting their craft background. So you have to have seen an incredible shift over the years in that.
Like everything's handmade now. We have chips, potato chips that are limited edition and handmade. James went to Alfred and I went to Cranbrook and I was just kind of taken with this. I chose Cranbrook because I was fascinated by the school. And I have to say, going in, I knew almost nothing about design. And I was really enamored with their design department or the history of their design department. And that was kind of the thing that kind of turned, flipped a switch for me a little bit. I would say, thinking about kind of our roots before, we were, we were an undergrad at the University of Akron and Kent State. And we went to thrift stores a lot and all the work that was made in Steubenville, all those Ohio potteries like Hall China, and we could find it very cheaply. So we started collecting it. And that was really, I think, when we turned to, from being artists to decide to have a company and collaborate, that was really the work that I think influenced us as far as what we could make or what we wanted to make. You know, at that time, in sort of the production world, there was kind of a thing where everybody would, I mean, people were throwing as well, but a lot of people were kind of, we thought cheating. And they would throw a pot and then make a mold of it and slip cast it. So you had fake throwing lines and then they would put some squiggles or spirals or whatever on it. And we really wanted to make work that looked, sort of, our thought was, we want to make work that could only be slip cast. And, you know, I think it was just also both of our aesthetics, sort of, for something a little more clean lined, like everything was a single glaze. We never hand painted. It was always just really about emphasizing form and form. It was really all about form. And I think, I think we just had, I mean, I, in particular, I think I had a very clean aesthetic. So even the artwork that I made in undergrad and grad, grad school didn't really seem too much like art. It seemed a little more like, it seemed cleaner or simpler. I think, you know, now it would be in a different environment. But then it just seemed very, you know, like it seemed very production oriented. But that was just, I think, our aesthetic. And I think it, like knowing, like when we were in undergraduate school in, at Akron U and Kent State in Ohio, we had great teachers. And I think, you know, we had a, at Akron U, we had a woman named Donna Webb. And she was very, very nurturing, very helpful and a, and a hard worker and good, a great artist. She was really good at the craft. And then at Kent State, we had Kirk Mangus and Eva Quam. And they each, I think, they, I think that's where we got an idea of what design could be, what design was. Because, you know, particularly Eva's work always had a, there was a meditative quality to it. But both of their work just came out of them. So immediately it seemed premeditated in a way. You know, which in the end to me related to work that I might design. And my work was always premeditated in a similar way, perhaps inspired by those, by them.
I don't know if you saw on the attendee list that Eva is joining us today and she's been tuning in for most of our.
All right.
Hi Eva.
Yeah. So, and I think the beginning of our work as Klein Reed in 93, when we moved here, we were actually, you know, just to touch on what David said, we, you know, what we saw in, in the market in, you know, was in the market that we thought we, we could be in, where we could sell a bunch of, you know, sell more work rather than being in a gallery and sell one piece. We thought that would fit our aesthetic more. But that work really to us felt, there was, there was a thread of something that felt a little bit like you had to apologize for slip casting a piece or something, you know. It, the craft was overtly handmade. So to begin to explain what is handmade to, to the world. But at the same time, having it cast. So it was a little bit of a, a little bit of an incongruous. It didn't fit with what, what we thought would be, we would want to make them be beautiful, which was, as Eva once said, "Oh, you make perfect things." So that kind of like sums up our, you know, why we did what we did. We just wanted to make clean forms. We wanted form to be the thing that told our story and told what we were thinking about.
And I would say, design-wise, just to circle back to Alfred, was, I guess, you know, Tom Spletth had sort of laid a foundation for slip casting, but nobody was slip casting when you were there.
Right. I taught it, you know, John Gill.
I guess John.
John Gill was using a lot of plaster and, but, you know, and I taught a class with John Gill, mold making class. And that was great. And he, he always had that going. Like he was very, you know, he was, he loves, you know, new processes and teaching new processes. But Val Cushing was also there. And so you had the sense of, I had a sense of, like, potters are designers, you know, thinking about like a great, how, you know, how great dinnerware was made, you know, like Dansk, you know, in the 50s hired potters to design, you know, dinnerware. And they would just find a way to reproduce it. And that, that's how dinnerware got made. You know, Jorn Windblatt and, you know, there were lots of potters who, who, who were also designers. And I think any person, any potter out there, you know, knows what I'm talking about. We're all designers, you know. You don't make a teapot just on the fly. You think about it, figure it out. And you don't make dinnerware on the fly either. It's very precise. It's like, it's like designing flatware. It's down to the millimeter and it makes a difference. And, you know, if that edge rises a little bit more, it tells a different story, is a different experience. So we're all designing things. It's not, and the utility, utility part of it and the aesthetic part of it, the sculptural part of it, it's also blurry. You know, it's very, very difficult to figure out when you're being a designer, when you're being a sculptor. Like, can I just pull this piece in? Because it fits with what I'm talking about. I, like, redesigned this piece and it's, it's sort of like a sculpture, but also a vessel. And it's very designed, but hopefully has some art expression in it. It does for me anyway. That's why I made it. So it's all blurry.
That collection was all designed without, to be just closed forms. And kind of at the last minute, we sort of snuck a small opening in.
Yes.
Which is sort of tucked in the back. So it's like sculpture on one side and vessel on the other. But James said, this is, we're on a tangent, but James said a really great thing that was, because I kept saying, why aren't we making more sculpture? Why are we always coming back to vessels? And he, James was saying that if it has a hole in it, then it's alive, like living things have holes in them. And inner things don't, which is, I'm sure you can find an example to disprove that. But it kind of made sense in my brain and stuck with me about what, what is our interest in vessels and casting. Anyway, back to you.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll move on in a minute to talk a little bit about your entry into New York, which I'm very curious about. The early 90s were a very specific time. But to go back to the idea of education just for a minute as well, do either of you teach at all? Or have you been sort of following the trends in design, education and pathways? I mean, I'm sure you are hiring people and looking at young people frequently. Is there anything that strikes you about where design education is right now?
I mean, we have, you know, we've taught over the years and we've taught at, we taught at Parsons for quite a while, which was pretty interesting. We taught lighting and we taught plaster and dinnerware and pottery and stuff like that.
That was amazing because they offered a ceramics class, but all, they, the students were all design students. So they came in with zero ceramic skills usually, amazing design skills, but with plaster and turning plaster and teaching them how to do things. They could make really sophisticated things with the use of molds. You know, they never could have done with, in a semester with a wheel or hand building or something like that. It was a great process.
Um, you know, I, it's, it's, it's a, I think there's a lot of good stuff going on in, in universities and, you know, we have a lot of, you know, it's not, it's not a bad thing to be pursuing work that's, that's designed anymore, which is great. And I think there's, has been a lot of liberation in the past five and 10 years. And, but I think the thing that has made the most difference is the marketplace is so expanded, expanded. And communities are so connected now, you know, potters are not alone. Potters are, you know, global citizens. They know exactly what everybody's doing all over the world. So we have all of this information. And I think it's been great permission for a lot of potters to be. I think it's been great permission for a lot of potters to be, to come out and, and make work that looks like exactly what they want it to look like. I mean, there's the other side of that too, where there's a lot of like copying and stuff like that. But copying is not the worst thing in the world. If it gets you to make something, you know, and then make another thing. So I think that that has been the thing that's really propelling, uh, potters to make work that looks like what they want it to, to look like. I think that the key, the key, you know, when we talk to people who are, who are, you know, like, who when we visit schools or talk to people who are trying to do something, um, the, the key is always desperation. You know, like how desperate are you to see the thing that you can, that you want to, that you want to see? You know, how, how desperate are you to make that happen so that you can see it in 3D? And so that's a key, a key part of it too.
Desperation, community.
It, it's interesting that back in 1993, I think, uh, I can remember, that was around the dawn of when I started to take my first classes in ceramics. And, um, I think back then, uh, nobody, despite ghost, uh, nobody wanted to be labeled as a potter. Or, you know, with exceptions. Uh, and it's interesting that it, it's a little bit like, uh, the words nerd or geek, like everyone really wants to identify as a potter.
Yeah.
So that's a good transition, um, I think, to ask you to talk a little bit about graduating from Alfred, graduating from Cranbrook, um, was New York always a part of the, um, equation? And what was it like to, to start to look at making that leap to, um, New York and starting the studio there?
I finished at Cranbrook a year earlier, so I moved to Alfred and spent a little time in New York over that year. But I, his last year of grad school, I, um, lived there as well. And, um, I guess we kind of decided, I think we were, there was, yeah, we were, we kind of decided maybe a few months before, maybe six months before he was graduating, that we would move to New York. And we kind of put the idea of a company together, a studio and, um, did lots of glaze and porcelain tests and things like that. So while he was doing his graduate school work, I was like illegally in the glaze room doing glaze tests. And, uh, we started laying out some ideas for what we would do. And then, uh,
We, we did, can I just tell about Lisa? I mean, we were working really, we were working a lot with, uh, our friend Lisa Orr, who was at Alfred. And we were gonna, we were gonna like start a company together when we graduated. And we were thinking, okay, we can move to Texas. That'll be fine.
Yeah.
And then, um, she got at Fulbright and she went on that. We, then, then we're like, okay, well, let's just do the business and go to New York.
Pick the hardest place to do it.
Yeah.
So we moved here and found an apartment and then, um, about six months later, got a studio and jobs. And, um, it took us about a year, I guess, um, where before we could, I worked at a gallery and I worked there for about a year and a half before I was able to quit and do it full time. But we both was just, it was just like late nights and weekends. And, um, we started collaborating, which we'd never done before. And, um, and then, um, kind of put a collection together with the idea that we would do a design show and, see what happened. You know, it was really that kind of thing. I couldn't, um, I don't know if I have early, early, but I have some, um,
Do we get to show slides?
Yes, absolutely. So let me make you able to do that. I'm going to hand the hosting abilities over to you. Okay, you should be able to do that.
Okay. Share screen. That showing?
Yes, that's beautiful.
So that was, that wasn't our first collection, but that was one of our earliest collections. And it, I think if you, like, looking at that, I can see all, all the stuff that I was talking about, about 20th century Ohio. You know, manufactured pottery is all, is a lot of it's right there. It was matte glazes, which was really kind of, um, wasn't really being done at the time. And, um, for us, all the, all the detail was in surface and in architecture and not in like painted pattern or things like that.
So I'm glad that you mentioned that. Uh, we also have Mark Bassett on this call. The, um, I don't know, the brain of all Ohio, um, pottery. So it keeps coming up. Ohio definitely has come up as a theme for a lot of these sessions.
Yeah. It was, I mean, we had, we still, uh, you know, we have boxes of it in our basement storage space. And, um, but it was, you know, easy to find for a long time and it really inspired what we did. We started kind of, I think part of that design knowledge also started, have, we started looking at other things. So this collection was really all about, um, we would kind of think of a shape and then think of how to dress it was kind of how we approached the, the pieces. We wanted it to look like one collection, but we also wanted it to look like it was collected from a thrift store. So the details don't really, the, the details are unique to each piece. They were really all looking at clothing and then responding like this piece, I don't know, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Okay. Like that piece was looking at a ripped turtleneck. And this piece was looking at, um, an Issei Miyaki pleated dress. And this piece was, um, when we first moved to Dior's, first collection was on exhibition at the Met. And, um, this was inspired by a huge like crinoline pleated dress that had a coat that went over it. This was called the French cuff and it was really the idea, the idea of the, you know, the cuff turning over at the top. Um, and that's really what inspired, uh, you know, we started kind of seeing other things and pulling that into our collection. And I think that's when it really started kind of getting good for us.
And also, you know, like mashing together all, every influence that was interesting to us, like Chinese form and Korean form, Japanese form, Danish pottery and other.
Yeah.
And painting and clothing and everything.
Yeah. We were also, um, it was, this was sort of pre-internet-ish. And, um, so we would go to the Strand and buy old Sotheby's catalogs that had pottery in them. And that was kind of like inspiration. We would cut out pictures, like the piece that I showed that had, that with the Dior dress, that's just a straight Korean shape that we found that we loved. And, um, we just kind of dressed it up.
You know, and also the, the thing about, we, we wanted to, when the work, uh, was its best, it would feel new. You know, we always want our work to feel, to feel like, oh, I've never really seen that before, but have this really strong other side of it that feels like really, really familiar. Like I, I know that. Haven't I seen that? And I think that's what the work, all that work from the, you know, from the twenties to the sixties, that was made in Ohio, that, you know, you just showed in the Iverson Museum right now in the show, has that it feels like home to almost everybody. Like if wherever you are in the United States, if that work, it, it, it feels like it reminds you of home or it feels like home or it feels, you know, safe, secure. It feels good. Uh, so that's for me, I think what we took from the Ohio pottery that we collected, that, that feeling of familiarity.
Can you talk a little bit about how hard it was or not to plug into the design community and publications in, uh, New York? And to make, um, stylists and decorators and tastemakers aware of what you were doing?
Well, um, I'll just talk for a sec. Actually, the, the way we got our first order, it was that we, um, took photographs of the, we made some pottery, what we thought would be a collection. And it's not the one we showed. It was like two collections before that, which we don't have pictures of. But we took photographs, we went to the magazine shop and looked at all the magazines and found stores that we thought we'd want to be in, found out who to send those photographs to. And we put them in a envelope and we sent them to the stores. That's how we got our first.
Very low tech order.
Very low tech.
It's, it got us our first order with Bergdorf Goodman. And that order was the thing that let us quit our jobs. James still taught a little bit, but, um, it's really the thing that let us quit our jobs. That sort of started things rolling where people would see us in stores. But really when we did our first design show, that was kind of the thing where it was, the work was all together and presented. And press walk it, you know, walk the shows and, um, you know, buyers walk the show and interior designers. So that was really like the big push for us, uh, for getting the work out there.
This is a tangent, but can you talk a little bit about, um, the, it's interesting, um, I've been fortunate enough to be going to China with some frequency over the last decade. And it's interesting, the, um, you know, not just in China, but how much, um, work is kind of knocked off. And, um, you, you talked about taking inspiration or lifting inspiration from things, but sort of outright copying and marketing, um, sort of replicas is something that's kind of increasingly happening. Can you talk about the arc of that through your career so far?
Well, um, you know, it's been, um, it's been very interesting to see what, what, uh, people think is worthy of knocking off and isn't worthy of knocking off. It's sort of like getting a little trophy, like, oh, that was, that. And then to see how it happens, um, is also interesting. Like we designed these tops for Hernan Miller and somebody just, uh, there was a company that copied them exactly as a trio. We just, they were exactly, but they did it in crayon. So you could spin the top and it would make a little crayon mark. Theoretically, it didn't really work very well. You know, but which is to say, you can't really worry that much about it. We designed some, a line called Still Life with, and we did Still, Still Life with flowers. So these, these are these very, very decorative pieces. That was in like 2000.
2003.
Okay. I don't know dates, but, um, yeah, okay. You know, we thought, oh, they're very complicated pieces. They're like, had lots of handwork on them and all that stuff. And we did them, nobody's really doing that kind of thing when we did them. And, um, they got, um, quickly copied, you know, it, it just, it just happened so fast. So, you know, you, you never know. There's not much you can do about it. And, uh, our philosophy for our business anyway.
That's the collection.
Is to keep moving, you know, we just, we have a lot of ideas and not a lot of, we don't feel like we have a lot of time to get all the ideas out. So we're gonna keep moving anyway. And, um, you know, it happens also, sometimes it just sort of accidentally happens. Like we designed for this, we designed a log set. And, um, turned out Andy Bremen also designed a log set that was very similar to what we did. And, um,
Well, his was a log that he would stack and make piles with.
Yeah.
Ours was truly like a decorative object that went in fireplaces.
Yeah. Well, we didn't know Andy did that. And he called us and said, you know, he was super nice. He said, this, this thing is happened. Ours got in the New York Times, like when we did it and he saw it there and then, and then, um, you know, but we said, you know, just keep making it. Don't, don't stop making it. They're different things and, um, you know, you just, you have to just keep going with your path. And the worst thing that you could do is not make something because you think it's too much or too derivative or something like that, you know, just be honest about the work that you make. And if it happens to look like something else, you know, you have to just make it.
Eva always said, uh, Zeisal, that, um, I, I think I said, how do you make something beautiful? And she was like, oh, you should never try to do that because you're already limiting yourself to the world of beauty before you're even starting. Like that's, you should never design with a negative impulse. So sort of worrying, I mean, we try to be very careful and, uh, stay on a path and try to make sure that our work isn't, um, you know, derivative or at least not too directly derivative of something like clothing or something, you know, uh, architecture. But, um, you know, it, it, I don't know, you just, it's, it's a, a fine line to walk. Like I try not to discourage people, um, but at the same time, you know, I try to say like, okay, well, you're making this thing that looks like this. This was an Instagram argument I had once. Why don't, instead of just copying that, why don't you think of what's next? Like take the next step beyond that thing that you're, you're reproducing and come up with the, the, you know, the future instead of just recreating the present.
You know, but that, to your point also, you know, to talk about Eva Zeisal again, she, you know, you cannot design from a negative place. So trying to make something new, for instance, is.
That's what it was. I asked her, how do you make something new? Now how do you make something beautiful?
It is a restriction, you know, you, you, it's like, I, I have to make something new, something that no one's ever seen before. You're, you're, it's so limiting, you know, and you start off in this headspace and you have part of your head blocked off of like all this stuff that you can't make. You know, that's why, that's why she was not totally in sync with the Bauhaus because there are so many rules and, uh, dogmatic restrictions. She couldn't, she couldn't, she hadn't agree with it.
Yeah.
So I want to get to Eva Zeisal a little bit, uh, in a moment. And I'm going to let you introduce these pieces, but, um, Mark Bassett asks a really great question about this whole body of work and the intricacy. Since, uh, these objects now almost defy the must have been cast tendency. And you're thinking the all over patterning and multiple layers, um, to the average viewer imply carving. It was the implication that he was making.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These were, these were cast and then, uh, while wet, sprig molded to do the patterning.
I mean, these pieces really came from initially, you know, we did a studies abroad in Italy with Kirk Mangus and Eva Kwong. And, um, you know, Kirk always used these little sprig, sprig, sprigs. And, um, and that's how I used all these little sprigs and, um,
And Lisa Orr is the queen of sprigs.
And, um, so, uh, you know, I was making work like this in undergraduate school. And then, so, uh, when we did Still Life, we thought we should just cover with flowers. And sprigs were the way that we, we really wanted the depth of this, that a sprig can give you.
Yeah.
And the immediacy, it just looks so fast. You know, it looks, we want our work to look like it just appeared and not like it was made. So, uh, the sprigs landed themselves to that in a little better way for us.
This is a piece of James's from grad school.
Yeah.
That's like a disc that was about four feet across. And that was really, um, a technique that he'd been doing for a long time. And, um, you know, going back to that previous piece, the, um, we got to a point, this was like 2003, where we were both a little burnt out. And we kind of decided like, we just want to make what we want to make and not try to think about if we have to sell it or not. And, um, it was really the idea that we were just going to go back to grad school in our studio and just kind of make as selfishly as possible. And that was the result of that was really kind of a 180 from what we had been doing, which was more sleek and less decorative, if you want to use that word. And, um,
To do another show and tell, I have, you know, this is actually the P, you know, one of the pieces like we were making in, in grad school. So this is a solidon shrub. So I was making these shrubs. And so this is directly why we made those pieces. And then that turned into this. And so this is directly why we made those pieces. And then that turned into this.
So this was sort of a little offshoot of the Still Life that we just made a few of, but just all sprayed low peacock base.
And yes, we happen to have a lot of work of ours at home and, which we never used to have, like when we first started, we just wouldn't bring it home. And then one day we just realized we have to make work that we want to bring home. And then we started doing that. And now we have too much work in our house.
Yeah.
I want to bring things back to Eva Zeisel so that we don't neglect her. And there are probably people on this meeting that don't really know a lot about Eva's importance and her history. Can you give us a little thumbnail bio and then talk about meeting her and how that spawned your collaboration?
She was born in Hungary. She became a journeyman. She trained as an artist, as a painter. I have to, really gonna have to edit a lot of history. She had a long history. She decided to become a potter because she didn't want to be a starving artist in a, living in a garret, she said. And she apprenticed as a potter. She was the only woman. And what was it? The chimney sweeps, potters and gravediggers guild or something like that was the union that she had to join. And anyway, she started potting, she started working with some factories. She went to Soviet Union and had a very important job there eventually designing. She was imprisoned for the attempted, a plot to assassinate Stalin, which was kind of an excuse that they were using to round up intellectuals and throw them in jail. And she was in solitary confinement for about a year and a half. When she got out, she eventually made her way to New York. And in 1939, started the first ceramic design department at Pratt in Brooklyn. And it was the first place where, you know, it wasn't sort of pottery. It was really about industrial design of ceramics being taught to students. And she had many amazing students. Gerald Gulata was a student of hers.
And, and if you don't know, if everybody watching don't know Gerald Gulata, you should look him up. He is a great designer.
Yeah.
Really great.
But, you know, she retired in her eighties and then got bored and went to Jolene and made amazing work. And when we met her through Margaret Carney, who was at Alfred and had put together that great show of call craft work. And so she introduced us and that's when we had lunch with her and we gave her a piece. And that's when she said, oh, you're trying to make things perfect. And, and we asked her, she was having some things reissued at the time. But we wanted to do new work with her sort of selfishly so that we could spend time with her. But also, we just wanted to get new work out there for her. And so
We didn't want to be like a people who reissue stuff. We just wanted to make new stuff.
Yeah. And so we just started, we went over to her house on a Friday night and she kept us there until like one in the morning. And we were just kind of talking about what we could do. And she showed us like her manuscript, like all the pages for the Magic Language of Design, that book that became Eva Zeisel on design. And the next day, we went up to her house upstate and spent the day cutting out paper silhouettes. And I actually have some
Which was her idea. She said, it was like, I mean, we left the house at like two o'clock or something.
It was pretty late.
And she said, are when are we gonna see each other next? And I was like, well, next week, let's meet next week. And she said, well, I'm going upstate tomorrow. Why don't you come? Come here, be here at nine and we'll go up. And we went up and that's when we, the, the first day we were together, we, we started designing stuff. And I think, are you going to show a picture?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
This wasn't our first day together. This was when we designed pictures. But these are the cutouts of what we did the first day together.
Share screen.
And there they are.
So we just worked with paper cutouts with her. These were sort of, we love this blue shape and then we wanted them to kind of nestle together. You know, we were kind of looking at things she had done in the past, like the little schmooze, salt and pepper shakers. And so we cut these three shapes, but then she kind of refined them to work as a family and then they became this trio. And then
You see, with that, with that back there, this is why she's such a great designer is that you look at the, the top, the top picture, which was just the exact like iteration from that, from the top, the first initial form, the largest blue form. And then what you would think would be the most important thing to hold on to would be that they hug each other, that they touch each other like that. But she let go of that and she gave them their own space. They still nestled together. They still love each other. But letting go of that idea that you might think is the most important thing in the designing was the thing that made them great.
Yeah. And this was just sort of, we had stacked something horizontally and now we wanted to stack vertically.
Yeah.
And this really came about because this shape in the middle existed and this one existed. And we, you know, just thought, okay, let's figure out how to do this. And that was a collection that we introduced in 99. It, it happened really quickly. We met her in, I think, May and we introduced the pieces in August. We had them finished. And the response was really amazing, like the press was ridiculous and, you know, honestly, there were lots of people who would see the work and ask like, didn't know she was still alive. Thought we were reissuing something because they didn't know she was still alive. And it really, we were kind of really happy that we could sort of help spread the word and bring her work to like a younger generation and a new generation. And this is like our, the oldest thing, you know, it, this just celebrated its 20th anniversary. It's been in production since then.
The thing about this, this stacking piece, that, you know, we'll also explain some of Eva and designing is that, you know, we, we had that, that middle shape and then we made it bigger to make them stack. And then we needed a third shape. And that top shape existed already. And I think we just sort of pulled it over from a stack of cutouts and put it there. And she's like, yeah, that's good. And isn't like not a, a worry. And it's not, so that, and even though it looks weird up there in a way, it is the thing that makes it human. You know, it's not, it's not fussed over and it's not perfect. It's a little odd. And that, you know, if, if a collection of bases or a collection of stuff is a family, that top piece is the cousin. So they're not all, not everybody's like a brother and a sister.
Yeah, she said it gets, she said it gets boring if they're all brothers and sisters and parents, like you need cousins. And this is the only one with any horizontal banding in it. And we kind of joked that this one is called the ugly baby. One in the collection. After a few years, we did a picture set with her and a tea set. And this is us working upstate with her. And yeah, like this picture here, like these are the three original shapes that really spawned the whole collection. Just after we spent a day cutting, we had a big mound of paper cutouts on the table. And, you know, these are the three that we kind of fell in love with. And then we would sort of extrapolate the, the pieces and then bring them back to her and she would fix them, you know, make them pretty. We also did them, the collection in crystal for a while, which was beautiful.
Do you have the prints, picture of the prints?
I do, if you want to see. We used to have one, but I'll just show you a quick one of the
Well, that's a good one. Show the, that one. So we just were doing all these cutouts with Eva, who's constantly tons of cutting up colored paper. We would use bright colored construction paper because it's easy to see and easy to cut. And it just was so logical to us. And Eva has, you know, she's Hungarian. She, she, you know, her apartment was all like Biedermeier furniture that she brought back. It was like
She's not a modernist, like she made modern dinnerware because it needed to be functional. You know, I mean, like she has a very decorative sense, like the things that she, like her, the, her, we used to get faxes from her and they had a giant E and Z on them that were the most like sort of calligraphic, wrought, overly detailed E and Z you've ever seen in your life. And it was really like, you know, her, her lament was that once modernism happened, pre-modern was not taught in design.
Right.
And there were all these amazingly beautiful things that just didn't get taught anymore.
She is, we should say that she is a modernist, but she is also a humist and she is not exclusive. You know, and she has a very decorative side. And so that's why we wanted to do these prints to show the decorative side of Eva. So can you see the prints now?
I can. And I see in the thumbnails that you also have some of your newer botanical prints that you can show.
Yeah. So this first set we did in 2005, it, we worked on it for maybe about three years with her because it was so intricate. And so the later collections we did in 2010, they were just a way to move through ideas a little more quickly. The first two were called Magic Language and these are called Lover's Sweet. And it was kind of the idea of two identical things that would come together to create like something else, a, a new shape. And then these we've done in sort of different variations. Here's us working on the first prints. And then these were a set that were kind of just the idea of trees, you know, working in her backyard and thinking about trees as decorative objects.
That first day that she brought us up to the country, she made us, she stopped like whatever, half a mile from her house and she said, okay, get out. And we got out and she said, hey, walk through the apple orchard. And meet us up there. We'll go up and wait for you.
In the car.
And so she wanted us city boys to go walk through the apple orchard before we sat down and designed stuff. So that reminds us of the apple orchard.
So I, I want to make sure that we've got enough time for some questions because people have already been doing a good job of using the chat for questions. But do you want to bring us up to date with some of the recent collections? It's been interesting to note your flirtations and engagement with the more maximalist aesthetic, even though you're managing to square that circle. Can you talk about where you're at right now? Either excluding the pandemic or incorporating it, it's an odd time for everybody at the moment.
I, I mean, I think in general, we kind of have an ongoing dialogue about where we're interested in our work going next. And we generally will introduce a new collection once a year and maybe add to it, you know, six months later. But then we're excited to kind of move on to the next design. I mean, that's really the fun part for us or the next collection. And, you know, find a new technique or develop a new blaze or whatever it is. And really, the past few years, we, we introduced the Nimbus collection about five years ago. And it's gotten very popular and it's kind of, we've had to, we've sort of been chasing the rock down the hill after pushing it up the hill. So
This stuff.
Yeah.
Looks like that.
Doesn't it? So we've been, we've been doing a lot of like production and we've added to it and but it's, that whole process has been funny because really the collection's about, like I said, five or six years old and it really, and two years ago, there was just some little shift and suddenly it had, you know, it had broken through some little social media ceiling or something. I don't know what happened, but we just started getting more requests for, for it. It had sort of felt right to people, I guess. Sometimes that takes a while.
I mean, I want to say, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I just want to say something about also like, you know, because it's been two months or so, we've been locked up a little bit. You know, and I just want to say something about COVID and designing that I think it feels, I think it, it's been a journey for, for like people who make things and think of things they want to make. And, you know, over these past couple of months to, to figure out what they want to, what they want to do and how to deal with this time. It feels like a lot of pressure, I think, you know, because you have time. And there is this moment when the world is shut down, there's pressure to emerge with something amazing. Like you had a baby, but that is unrealistic and weird, I think, in this time where there is so much. It's just, COVID is hard, you know, it's, it's like, it's a constant, living with a constant threat. And it is a weight that we're all living under. And the best, you know, we went through a couple of weeks of like feeling some pressure of like, oh, okay, what are we gonna do?
Let's paint. We were like, I made a painting, James was working on small sculptures at home and
Yeah.
And suddenly that all kind of stopped and it was like cooking and now it's gardening. The gardens look really good outside.
And I, and we, we like, we stripped our dining room table twice. We stripped it, painted, stripped it again. And now we're gonna paint again. But that, it turned out that that journey kind of led us to open up some thoughts about what we're actually wanting to do, you know, we went, we've been through
Next glaze.
Thinking about color a lot and blaze and surface and sheen and forms through that. And it's like Eva Zeisel said, you know, you cannot, you can't go into this thing with the purpose of coming up with something great. You have to go into this thing being where you are each day, doing your best and being open and seeing what is in front of you, finding the beauty in what's in front of you. And then it just will happen. You know, I think we, we have some ideas developing that really feel good to us. And they're not like anything that we thought that they would be net, that, that we would do next. There, it's not, you know, it's not, we're not gonna like add more stuff on stuff, which is what we probably should do.
Well, maybe.
We might do that, but, but it's not the idea that we're thinking of, you know, we're thinking of something different and it came organically through letting go.
Yeah. I do think, and Hori I see in the comments just mentioned being selfish. And I think that that's one thing that we realized that we need to be more
How do you mean?
Selfish.
What do you mean?
Just about what we want to make and how we want to make it and making for ourselves and starting from that point and letting the rest will kind of flow from that.
Yeah. Yeah.
My final question is about Instagram, which I think you've both brought up in some fashion. Can you talk or reflect a little bit on, I don't know, the, the, what the rise of image-based social media has meant for both your practice and your marketing?
Oh, it's such a love hate thing for me. Like, it's nice to get our work out there, but it, it, it pains me that there is work that is amazing that does not photograph well. Like, it, it's really sad to me that it, sometimes it just comes down to a good photograph. And that was the problem with, you know, when, when there were magazines and we were, you know, and it was the thing of just like, a, a good photograph sells the work. I mean, I guess it always has because that's how people see it. But it's kind of sad that it even more so, like to see the immediate reaction to a great photograph versus a, a not so great photograph of the same piece maybe on Instagram. It's like, oh, okay, we have to work on our photography more.
I think it's also been really great, I think, for us, Instagram, you know, because main world that we were in is, you know, we sell our work in stores. And, and we tried to get press in mag, in magazines and stuff like that. So we And um, and we try to get press in mag, in magazines and stuff like that. So we um, we, I think at some point we're feeling a little disconnected from the world of potters and pottery and we, we feel like we are potters. And, you know, and um, it's connected us really well with that world again. It's been really nice.
It's been amazing to see for me how much people who identify as potters, uh, how Instagram has become this sandbox that um, can be easily navigated, I think, for a lot of people who wouldn't count themselves as being adept in social media. Um, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's very empowering, I think, for people.
So we've got a little bit of time. If anybody in attendance uh, would like to unmute themselves uh, and ask a question directly, I would like you to do so. Um, otherwise, uh, the chat feature is there and uh, we can ask questions via uh, chat if anyone would like to uh, chime in. And if there's anything uh, else that is sort of upcoming that you're interested in plugging or putting into our minds, James, Jason, David, uh, you do take this time to do that.
Yeah.
I'm trying to crowdfund for a book.
I'm just kidding, I'm not. Maybe while people are asking questions, we can um, also just parade some things by the screen.
Please, that would be great. I asked you for show and tell, so.
There's stuff that I see that I love that I don't always look at. This is just a newer piece. I'll start with one of ours. This was kind of an extrapolation of Nimbus a little bit. There's a, a little sort of, sits in a shallow bowl so it can work as sculpture or as um, vessel.
I mean, this piece, do you, do you want to say something?
No. Are you, are you using any 3D technology, any milling or uh, 3D printing in the um, uh, sort of modeling of your objects?
No, it's all just carved.
Okay.
Out of plaster, turned, everything is carved out of plaster.
And Florence asks if you can describe your staff as well.
Uh, very cute. Um, yeah, no, they're, we have three people uh, usually. We've been bigger and smaller, but this is where we like to be right now. Um, and.
We, we grew our business for a while and had, it was really to the point where it was managing people and not making work. And when we moved our studio, um, and also the two thousand ten recession sort of tidied things up a lot, but um, we really decided to commit to kind of running as small as possible because it's just, keeps it more humane for us and it keeps us closer to the idea of kind of, you know, being artists, I guess.
At some point, we decided not to get bigger, but to get smaller or to stay the size is what we like. Um, so we have three people and um, not all full-time. And I um, am always making things and all day with them and um.
Eva.
Beautiful. And um, I glaze everything still. That's like the one thing that it's been very difficult to let go of and I, you know, it's, it's not gonna happen at this point. I'm not letting go of that. But we have very, very, very skilled and talented.
Kirk.
People who work with us.
Kirk Lusterpiece.
And as you're doing show and tell too, um, John Drighgorio asks, how has travel influenced your work? We all want to hear about travel right now.
Travel, travel has really, has really influenced our work. Um, you know, especially our travel to Italy. It's sort of directly influenced a couple of collections of ours. Um, but um, you know, we're very influenced by Italian designers and design. Um, in fact, this, this collection, uh, Messala is named after a beach in Capri that is one of our two favorite beaches. Um, there, and it also has a very um, Memphis feeling to it. Um, without being, hopefully not being too derivative of Memphis exactly. But um, we, we're in, you know, we went to Hawaii and we were very influenced by the volcanoes and the lava um, on Hawaii. And we came back and we uh, decided we needed to do um, this glaze. So we developed this glaze and we did it. And uh, so we're always being very influenced by, by travel.
We also both did a, like in nineteen eighty-nine, my last year in undergrad, we did a summer studies abroad at, in Cortona, Italy. And that was the first time we'd both been out of the country and we were in Italy for ten weeks. And actually Kirk and Eva were teaching that summer. And um, that was an amazing lesson in, for me seeing age, like I, I, you know, I was in third grade in nineteen seventy-six and the bicentennial like just meant like, wow, two hundred years. And it was just kind of drummed into my head forever. And suddenly, you know, there was things that were centuries older than that. Um, and then I remember going to like Peru and to Istanbul and suddenly there was like another layer underneath that, that was even, you know, it gets older. It's amazing to see.
That first trip was really uh, really uh, depressing for, for me because I realized that everything has already been made and it's just so great. Already I'm never gonna be able to make anything as amazing as that. Um, so um, you know, but with time, I, I assimilated all of that beautiful stuff that I had seen and um, was able to, to deal with my sadness that I was never gonna be as great an artist as, I'm never gonna make a volcano or, you know, uh, any kind of duomo at all, but.
Technical question, uh, Michael asks, uh, how dry or wet uh, is the clay in the sprig when you're doing your sprig work on your design pieces?
Oh, it's as wet as possible. It's, oh, it's as wet as it can be. So um, yeah. If you're, you know, with these, with these pieces, we're, I was doing like thousands of uh, sprigs, but I would, I use, I always use some, I prefer to use um, bisque terracotta uh, sprig molds. But they, it's a little bit hard to get all the detail in a bisque sprig mold, so I end up using a lot of um, carved plaster sprigs. And so I would make multiples of the, the sprig in plaster so that when I make, like say I do press two hundred of these little sprigs and I put them in stacks and then wrap them up in little packages. The sprig gets saturated and I need a new s- s- sprig, so a new mold.
Yeah.
So that's how I do it. I rotate out the, the molds and, you know.
Um, looking at Alan Horry's response about um, form, um, you know, all we care about is form. S- surface is super secondary to us. Like, we're really happy when we just have a good glaze and we can dunk a pot in it and it's done. Um, for the most part. Um, but it is really sad that like people do not see form. People see surface. And I even think of like, we've tried to have things, you know, like um, copy, like to, to try to copyright a form you can't do. You can copyright a pattern on a form, but you cannot copyright a form. And um, it's just sort of the world that we're in that, you know, basically surface and pattern are more important than form, but you know, it, uh, that's something that we've always had to strive. It, it's always been our interest, but it's always been kind of the, the teaching thing that we've been pushing like to the people, like our customers and the stores that carry our work is just, you know, without the form, you don't have a good pot, no matter how great the surface is.
And I mean, I think that's a really good observation uh, about engineering sensibility and um, architectural sensibility. Uh, I think that is, you know, I'm not sure if that's more Alfred or Cranbrook, but it comes from our love of just, I think it comes from our love of form. And when we see, you know, some buildings are just, will uh, you know, make you just burst out into tears. They're so beautiful. And we were, we were, we have a direct architectural ripoff in our line that we did once. And it was uh, after a night at, um, hanging out in the Plaza Lincoln Center. Looking at the beautiful architecture of those three buildings, we, we came back on the next day, designed this, this line, which we ended up calling LC. This is the obelisk. And um, we didn't even know that we were doing it until our friend said, came in and looked at the, the plaster forms that we carved and said, oh, it looks like Lincoln Center. And uh, we didn't know it.
There's sort of that balcony detail on the, the building on the right.
It's sort of these buttresses, um, you know, it's very brutalist uh, looking uh, architecture, but so we did rip off something pretty directly, but um, and with like the Nimbus stuff, there's a lot of engineering that goes into those pieces. Uh, and I mean, a lot of pre, premeditated engineering. We, but we, we do draw everything out by hand. It's all, it's all just drawn out and figured out with arithmetic and stuff like that. So, yeah, this is another architectural monument.
Yeah.
Uh, this is Eva's ISO that she did in the eighties in Hungary at the Jeanne factory. Yeah, and then um, we were very lucky to get those pieces. I, I um, we were at Eva's house upstate once and, and um, we, I was up in the studio and I brought that vase down the steps or one like that vase down the steps. And um.
You had a question about.
Cause I had a question about how it was made. And um, she answered my question. She said, darling, take this back upstairs very carefully. Okay, is there another question?
Yeah.
I think with a little, one last show and tell, it might be a nice place to wrap it up, but with this um, bringing everything back to form, I think um, really great place um, to come back to. Go ahead and show us um, that last piece. I might have a few more things to mention and then I will invite anyone who wants to stay on for a few minutes, who wants to turn on their camera and say hi, uh, either to me or to James or David. Uh, to do that, I'll keep the meeting open for that as long as you want to stay. And what, so what was the last piece that you brought out?
This is just another piece from the Nimbus collection. We started at, we added a black glaze and um, you know, these all started out as kind of cylinders, but um, we really wanted to introduce curves and that meant kind of radiating the ball's size so that they would kind of hug the, the curve. Um, so you get these really beautiful kind of flower shapes.
Yeah, it was a bit of figuring out.
Yeah.
Kiki, technical question. Uh, I assume you're applying all of those forms to a central form. Uh, what's your loss um, rate for a lot of the Nimbus pieces?
Uh, it's um, we have a pretty good rate. It's, you know, we don't, I mean, maybe one out of ten. It depends on the piece.
Yeah.
Um, so, and it could be anything from, you know, people kind of expect these to be perfect, which is unreasonable, but.
It's kind of the curse of trying to make things perfect.
So it could be a pinhole, you know, and then it's, you know, but I, you know, we, we try to sort of fix it, refire it and uh, but generally pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay, terrific. So I'm gonna wind things up there. Uh, you can join us here every Friday at one PM. Next week, we're going to have Dr. Sharif Bay with us for our conversation. And I've set these up on Zoom so that I think it's gonna be the same link, uh, link week after week. So you should be able to reuse the link that brought you here today. Otherwise, you can go to www.eversyn.org and click on online classes and get the link to the current class and find out the other things that are going on at the Eversyn. Uh, so James, David, I want to thank you with all of my heart for joining me and I can't wait to get you up to Syracuse to uh, bring you into the architectural marvel that is the Eversyn's building. And I invite everyone to stick around for a few minutes and say, say hi.